Okay, well, go ahead and call this city commission meeting to order. Time is six oh one, Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Ralph, do the location first, please.
This is our heads, please. Dear heavenly fathers, thank you, Lord, for the blessing of us being able to gather here to do the work for the city. We ask for you to guide our meeting, guide our words, and we pray that our actions will be pleasing to you. We ask you to watch over us as we travel back to our homes and just bless this city, Lord. We thank you most of all for the gift of your son, Jesus Christ, and we ask all these things in his name. Amen.
Thank you, Ralph. Commissioner Rico, you lead us in the prayer.
Good morning, ladies. To the flag of the United States of America, a new republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, Chris, can I have a roll call, please?
May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
May I have a question, focus? Mr. Vigil?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, item number two, item A, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Vigil?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Okay, down to public comments. Public comments, citizens wanting to speak during this time, sign up prior to the start of the meeting. Public comments is an opportunity for citizens to comment on the city's concerns. This is not for discussion nor questions and answers. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. First on the list, Mr. Jim Lafferty.
Mayor and Commissioner, just want to visit a little bit about the Four Street project. I see it's not on the agenda, but so in a couple of meetings ago, we identified a lack of communications. I think everybody on the commission agreed that we've been working harder at communicating with citizens. I believe in the minutes it says that before the project ended, we would address any issues that I may have with the driveway. So the construction company's gone. Nobody called me to tell me anything about what are we going to do with your driveway. I came in on Tuesday, the message from the city manager, not a call from the morning to call me so we could discuss what the next step might be. And as of today, I've still not received a phone call. I did finally get a hold of Ralph, and Ralph and I visited a little bit about it, and I think he understands where I think the project should go as far as the rest of my driveway. I'm going to say again, it seems odd to me that I stood with the, on the city side about not spending any of their money than we had to. I lived with you changing your mind and going across the street and doing a totally different thing. And I still stand that way. We shouldn't jerk anything out. We shouldn't change anything. Prior to the project finishing, on Jerry Morrison's side of the street, we replaced all the concrete and we did asphalt all the way to his building. Just like he asked, just like you told me I couldn't have. On my side of the street, they left and they left a three-foot dirt strip between their work and my building. Now, that was asphalt slash dirt previously, and they cut it out there. So I don't know where the project stands. I would guess that the project's old because they're gone, but I think somebody still needs to address that. Mr. Lopez explained to me that they were doing a walkthrough today. He would address, he would try to do so. But I still want to make the point that you guys say one thing, and it's not your job to run that project. But you assured me that they were going to communicate with me. You assured me that just stay still for a minute and everything will be okay. Well, the minute's up, the contractor's gone, and I still have dirt in front of my head. So, thanks, Eric.
Okay, next up on public comments, Heidi Adams.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you for having me today. I am the district attorney here for Quay, DeBakka, and Harding Counties. Since taking this rollover back in April of twenty twenty four, I've noticed a vast improvement in our police force here in Tucumcari. I've been a prosecutor just shy of twenty years, and I've worked with federal, state, state of Texas, counties. And it's hard to find good officers. And I understand with limited resources here in Tucumcari, we do the best with what we have. I just want to say since Chief Luke Brinzel, Emilio, took over, he's done a great job. You've got a great mentor, a great professional in that job. He needs to be able to do his job in the way he thinks is most appropriate. And I just want to say I stand with Tucumcari Police Department, and I just want to say what a great job they're doing. On a personal, non-Tucumcari resident position, and I apologize, I did not see the commission's agenda before. But as far as the cannabis ordinances, as far as expanding the hours, if that's being discussed, no physician. But on more public consumption areas, I'm just generally opposed. I don't feel like I should have to keep driving through the smoke all through town. So I would just ask that you consider that those be done outside of residential areas and outside of main streets in Tucumcari. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all for public comments. Item number four, consent agenda. I get approval for the consent agenda.
Commissioner, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Vigil?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. On to item five, Stephen Salas, Public Works Director, appointment of voting, alternate member to the Northeast Regional Conference, planning hard to the airboat.
This is just for me to be a voting member. You've got to be active in these events taking place. If there is a voting member not showing up, like Ralph, you know, last week, last meeting, he was out. They let me go ahead and fill in or pencil in. But these, they, these places help and the state helps give you more funding as long as you attend. They're trying to make it to where you've got to be in person, but you've got to have a voting member to be in there to receive some of these funds. And so I'm just asking to be an alternate on this, just so we can continue moving forward with the city's progress.
Anybody have any questions?
I went to the meet, that's the meeting I went to, correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's the one that we hosted?
Yes. Stephen did a great job. It was even the projector, everything was just perfectly done. I know that Loey had a lot to do with that also, but it was a very good meeting. I learned a lot. You're right, there are, the last meeting, you said if you went that you would just pick up little nuggets. But there were people, I don't know how, people of high places that were there, you know? And it was nice for them to see, couldn't it, Gary?
I plan on trying to host more often. You know, I wasn't really, when I was with the county, I wasn't, I didn't really have the capacity to host meetings at large. And so now we have the capacity. I was very involved. It's pretty much like my second work family. And so I plan on trying to host more of those coming up. You know, you get more involved, and the more you're involved, the more the opportunities.
Thank you. Anybody have a motion for approval?
Commissioner, I'll make a motion to approve Stephen as the alternate member.
And a second.
Here, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Vigil?
Yes.
Okay, Ralph Lopez, Community Development Director, Resolution twenty eight twenty five dash thirty five replaces Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty one of the ICIP twenty twenty seven project list submitted on the new DFA platform as required on October twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
Mayor, commissioners, you didn't leave me much to present, Mr. Mayor. This, the reason we're having to redo the ICIP or resubmit it is because DFA put out a new program that you uploaded on. And with that, we took the opportunity to also add three projects that have kind of come up since we submitted it the previous time. GIS mapping, Tucumcari Park and Recreation, Skate Park, Pump Track, and, oh, I guess it's, I'm sorry, two, two projects, not three. So at this time, I guess I'd like to ask for your approval of this resolution. End stand for questions.
Anybody have any questions?
When, when will we maybe hear about the grant?
Anytime now on that, yes, ma'am. They were supposed, they were supposed to have said something during the infrastructure conference, and they were a little delayed, so we're expecting it any time. Hopefully, it's next week.
Welcome by, maybe tomorrow? Your trust for running on a short time period or something?
The only other question I had about it was, so when I was reading it, in the contract, it did not include the tearing out of all those old utility places. Do, do we have staff that'll do that?
We're already on it. We're, hopefully, in there tomorrow.
Well, I'm behind, sorry. I didn't drive down that road today, so I'm sorry. Thank you, both of you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept Resolution twenty five dash thirty five.
A second.
Roll call, please.
May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Vigil?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Hey, item number seven, Lisa Downey, Finance Director, Finance Report.
So we are mid-month, and so you were provided with a budget report and a detailed report of the expenditures that have occurred since the last meeting. There, just to note on the revenues, the GRT, all the taxes that come in from the state, those haven't been recorded yet. So once those come in, those will, you know, shore up this month, essentially. Also, most importantly to me, is the one sheet that I gave you. It is the approval by the state auditor's office to go ahead and proceed with the contract that you all approved. I did speak with the auditor today. We have made a plan. By next week, we will begin uploading all the stuff that we had prepared for the prior auditor. We have a very optimistic, I hate to say this out loud, but he's driven as well. He wants to hopefully complete twenty-three, and just like I said, this is a very optimistic goal. His goal is to complete twenty-three by mid-January and then roll right into twenty-four. So that, you know, with the intent of we are done with twenty-five audit before we have finished the FY twenty-six year. So I'm glad that he's that driven on it. He realizes the time crunch that we're in and the funding, you know, that's being prevented from us not having, though. So he's on board with the, with our strict timeline.
I, I appreciate it, and I didn't go through, you know, we didn't have time to go through it last time. And this manager, Nancy Renee, and Lisa, the budget part looked great. I, I think that y'all are way ahead on that. I don't know if the other commissioners agree, but that looked really good, so y'all are to be commended for that.
Well, and the commission went with a very conservative mindset when this was developed, knowing that we were still, you know, rectifying something. So to make sure that we're still on a good footing.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, District Clerk.
That's me.
Attorney in Guarding Airport Hangar.
Yes, so I was asked to update you all on the airport hangers. Ms. Suther, Deputy Clerk, has worked diligently on, doing a little bit of research on payments that have been possibly received. What we came up with is we have, currently have eighteen hangers out at the airport. Going back to twenty-four and twenty-five, we are looking at potentially receiving six thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and eight cents. And looking at increasing those fees, those lease fees in twenty twenty-six, bringing the revenue up to eight, up to ten thousand dollars. We've had, we've sent letters to every of the lesses. We've been in communication with five of them, and I believe those five are, are able to make payments possibly in full, hopefully by the end of the month.
So this was something from the past that wasn't being included.
So with that, Mayor, from this point forward, my office, along with Ms. Suther, we will be responsible in preparing invoices and mailing them to, mailing them along with agreements in a timely manner.
Any questions?
No, not about that. Can I ask you another question that came up a couple of meetings ago about the golf course with those, the rentals, I believe?
Crushet?
The crushet. Has that, anybody brought anything yet about that?
Not that I know of. Yeah, I haven't received anything, Lisa.
I received a listing. She corresponded with the deposits, the deposits that I have matched, sorry.
Please.
So I received a listing of deposits that had been made by the golf course so that I can match them, you know, with what has come in because they weren't given a designated revenue line. The ones that I have matched so far look to have gone into the general membership. Now, the way that works is it was a general fund revenue, right? So at the end of the year, it just went back in to the general fund to make that in budget. It wasn't specifically, it didn't specifically stay there. So we need to round that out so that it's within those dollars that were used to make the overall budget. We have created definitive, I guess, revenue lines for the different types of money that come in. So if it comes in golf, it's not going to go, because right now it says golf, or how it was, it said golf memberships, but no department. And that's how it ends up in the big pool, right? So what we've done now, it's golf memberships, but it's in the golf department. So that that money is tracked throughout the year as we go forward to project this cash day here. Does it roll in, does it need to roll into the big pool of general dollars? Fire, for instance, also had donations. We did the same thing for them so that they know that that's a different type of money, right? It's a fiduciary fund that they can do with what they like. It's not state given funds. So we're trying to do that as we recognize those different dollars so that it's easier to track, easier to report to you guys. You know, we can push a button ultimately and say, you say, I want to see what the golf sheds is. Okay, we're going to run that report for, you know, golf sheds. But we can continue that, and like I said, I looked a little bit into it. I didn't go in depth of it just because everything, or because it's on the, on the plate to get that exact dollar. Make sure we match those dollars that they, they were submitted. And I know Kristen did a lot of looking in that, too, so.
Thank you.
Get them all square.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Good. Onto nine, executive session. Item A, executive session pursuant to section ten dash fifteen dash one H two of the New York Scope Open Meeting Act pertaining to personnel matters regarding city manager. Can I get a motion to go on to the executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to go to the executive session.
In a second.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor, roll call, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Vigil?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to adjourn this session?
Make a motion to adjourn this session.
Commissioner Brito?
Yes.
Commissioner Willis?
Yes.
Mayor Ogilvy?
Yes. Okay, city managers report.
The cannabis ordinance, there's been back and forth between myself and the attorney. I've been out of the office for two weeks, he's out of the office again this week. So we're working on it, but it's not done yet, so it's still a work in progress. The lease agreement with Versatec. So in my mission to go back and find any outstanding leases that the city has, came across the one for Versatec. This contract expired...
Twenty one, I think.
October twenty twenty.
Twenty one.
Twenty one. So it had expired in twenty, yes. Actually, January eighth of twenty twenty. It was for five years. The agreement was for... For two different properties, one on Campbell and one on Maple. Versatec currently is still occupying these. From looking at the finances, even though the agreement had expired, they were still continuing to pay their lease. So we need to go ahead and get a current lease on the books. They were requesting that it be extended on the amount of time that they lease the property.
So they paid for fifteen years, or ten years over the five years.
Yes.
Without an agreement, I mean, without an agreement. That's what the maniacs come in for.
Yeah, absolutely. The property on Campbell, they were paying seven hundred a month. The property on Maple, it was two hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. So it goes to just short of twenty thousand every year that we collect from them. I'm asking for your approval to move forward with the lease agreement. I don't know if you guys want to continue with those amounts that they were paying in the past, if you wanted to increase those.
Anything on that, as we go?
I think that if they paid while their contract expired, I think that, you know, they did really well enough. I think we should just keep that same, but that's my...
I agree.
Very good, I agree too. We need a motion.
So if that means I don't make a motion to accept the lease agreement with Versatec Industries?
One second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Brito?
Yes.
Commissioner Willis?
Yes.
Mayor Ogilvy?
Yes. I don't see. American Ramp Company Sourcewell Design, Build and Bring.
So the city is being proactive in regards to the pump traffic skate park that we like to build at the old Hantray Park property on the boulevard. So we reached out to American Ramp Company and between them and our attorney, they came up with this agreement, which services should we get the funding to support with the company? So that is what you have in there. If we are given one of the quality of life funds, we have only eight months to spend, what is it, four more minutes? For our office. So we're trying to get this pre-work out of the way, so that way if we do get the funds, we can just hit the program. To the process, is that right? How about the... Not to go into contract, we must get the funding. There's been back and forth several times between...
I wish that would need to be put in here. That if the city wouldn't receive the funding, that this contract would be null and void somehow. It would go into effect until funding is received.
Page fifty five, the meeting.
Is this something that we need to table? Because we have a meeting next week.
This is the last one for November, and then two last week in December.
Yeah. Yeah, this is the fifty, page fifty five is the contract with Sourcewell. That's the co-op that we're using. It's the agreement between the city and... And the contractor, American Ramp Company.
On the back, the cancellations states that Sourcewell already entered my Campbell contract at any time. We're going without cause upon sixty days without notice to the other party.
Well, if we're gonna know in the next day or two, we'll know by the next meeting.
Yeah.
Whether to cancel or not, I would think, right? Sorry. And it does call for it not... It's effective upon the date of the final signature, and we know how slow that goes.
Well, that's another one of the concerns, right? Is that, you know, we only have eight months to spend four point one million dollars. And if we continue to hold this on, I mean, if they could say that the contract would only be good if, you know, the money was awarded, something like to that step. Because once we get this funding, we need to hit the ground running. I mean, we've already got a lot of departments involved trying to clean up and get it ready this way. Because eight months is not a lot of time to spend four million dollars. I'm pretty sure if we get it done, but it's gonna be hard, it's not gonna be easy.
Is there a way to add that clause?
Yeah.
No, there it says that it expires... Manager, it says that it expires December twenty, two thousand twenty-four.
Yes, I did see that.
Under the contract. Okay. Fourteen. Or page one of the
Page
Sourcewell.
Page fifty-five.
And now maybe we get some clarification, maybe have a special meeting or something, so we can get started.
Oh, yeah.
So, direction, do you wanna go with this, you wanna table it or?
I mean, if you guys are willing to have a special meeting, so we can get it done. I just
Next week sometime.
We should know by, by next week. We're hoping tomorrow. We were hoping since last Friday, reached out to Carmen from DFA as well. She's the one that administers now. And she just said it wasn't gonna be released at this time, that they were, you know, they had done the rating and ranking themselves and all that. So we're hoping, fingers crossed, because, you know, the only way we get away with not spending that in that time is if the extension, if they had an extension or time on it. But there, it's up in the air. If you don't have it spent, it's gone. So we gotta make sure we do something to, you know, to secure this to move forward.
Okay. You got a motion to table, correct? You want me to do something to table?
I guess I want more of an effect commonly by table at four, sometime over the next week.
Yeah, we could possibly do it next week and just do it over March, so that way we don't have to
Do we need to put that in the question?
No, I'll have to put them
Okay.
Yeah, anytime.
So the language that we have put for next week.
Table on special meeting.
So I'm in the main motion to table the American Ramp Company Sourcewell Building to sign an agreement until next week.
Can I take it?
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Willis?
Yes.
Mayor Ogulvie?
Yes.
Commissioner Beato?
Yes.
Are the city managers report?
Yes, I just have a few things. The cornhole tournament was this past weekend. I'm staying with coordinator Judge Abaca. She stated that he backed for our first event, then it went pretty well. There was a few areas that we needed improving on, such as being able to get more food vendors out there. He said it was an interruption to have to stop the treatment for a couple of hours for the vendors to go and eat. We are looking at holding our back end of cornhole tournament in March and then the big centennial cornhole tournament in early June. The banners have been starting their installation for to promote the Route sixty-six centennial year. But we're still continuing to go out, so that's a work in progress for things to plateauing itself. Steven and his team have started to remove the equipment that is at the Hunt Trailer Park property. And we did, once you did, we need to look at the building there. And it is suitable for us to bring the lights out for the bathrooms. So that will save us on humidity air and we'll be able to get to another part of the project. We are also continuing to move forward with the roof projects. That's the replacement of the gadgets of the roofs that they sustained in May of twenty twenty-three. We're continuing to explore, trying to get to the end of the line, but it's still a long progress. With that, the H vac units have been installed. We're working at the construction center, so we're pretty pleased with that. And then last but not least, last week, while I was in Albuquerque, at the Infrastructure Finance Conference, we did meet up with Resource Life and Sustainability Partners. The financial situation of the city is in, there will be a delay in the installation of heaters. He said the progress that we've made with getting the auditor for fiscal year twenty-three obtained, that was good. What first is keeping the price of, you know, the status on that. I did speak with Mr. Rayland of the bond while we were there to see if the car would be able to be a viscount for us in the interim. And he said that we could be. So they were going to be working with their people to see if that was a possibility. And then we will just do it as a short term until we were able to get the physical items completed, so. Is that any questions?
Ms. Willis, anything?
I just wonder, I know that we've already talked in other meetings about Mr. Lafferty came tonight, but of Mr. Morris and Mr. Lafferty's concerns. I think that's the last part, pretty much of Fourth Street, that's finished. And we had mentioned also in the last meeting, or a time or two ago, about having a open meeting with Third Street businesses before that got started. Because we were saying that it was after Fourth Street was finished, so we'll make sure that we plan that. Even if it's January, I don't know when you're gonna Ralph, when are you gonna start Third Street? It'll still be, it'll be after Christmas, right?
All right. Should we do?
I have a couple, just properties. I think I showed all the commissioners earlier. Just properties that were around town that I had some things. I went by and looked at them, printed them out, just so we could have a record of them. But a lot of them show, you know, a lot of weeded properties. And a lot of alleys that are, I think, also of danger for trash trucks to go into, so I'll give you these. There's one here that is on the on-ramp of I forty on the east side. The very far east side of Kimcary Boulevard. The road's deteriorating and the curb is already gone. I mean, the cement to the curb and all that's already gone. So it looks like a main drainage, so I think we need to get this stayed on that also. And Ralph, are we in agreeance to Mr. Lafferty's property that we need to fill in that part?
Mr. Mayor, we're still in discussion on it. I need to go back and look at what it looked like before, based on the before pictures. And I didn't get that done before our meeting today, but we'll take a look at it. If it was in fact removed by the contractor, I think we'll need to do something to make it, to make it whole again.
And I know if we can't fill it in with pavement, I like to, I mean, whatever we gotta do to fill it in with concrete or whatever we gotta do, I think that we promised that we take care of it, so I think that as a city, we need to, if we have to take responsibility for it. We have to. And I think with Mr. Modest's thing, I think we need to come to some kind of agreement to what we're gonna do with that sidewalk curve. We're gonna have the roll-off curve on that part of this property. So we could, we could move on with this. I think we've been into argument too long about this. And I think we, we need to work together. He is a business owner here in Kimcary. And listen to his concerns and see what we can do about that side of the property. Anybody else have anything?
I would like to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving. And don't forget the Christmas live parade will be December sixth, starting at, the lineup is at five thirty on Link Street, and then it's gonna start at six o'clock and go down to the depot, where they're gonna have more events down that way. And also don't forget the expo at the Community Center.
Thank you guys for joining us. Appreciate the meeting, Andrew.
Mr. Mayor?